Good evening and welcome to the first of three meetings tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beech Grove. And at this time, we will convene our Board of Sanitation meeting for Monday, July the 1st, 2019. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my far right.
Dave Harrison.
Dan McMillan, Clerk Treasor.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Thank you. Board, you have been presented a printed copy of the minutes of the previous meeting dated Monday, June 17th, 2019. Floor is open for any questions, comments, or corrections.
I have none.
No questions, comments, or corrections. I'll ask for motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll make said motion.
I second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. Thank you. This evening, Board, we have three pages of wastewater claims in the amount of $280,804.42. The floor is open for any questions or comments.
I have none.
No questions or comments. I'll ask for motion to approve the wastewater claims dated July the 1st, 2019, in the amount of $280,804.42.
I'll make that motion.
I second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. We have no unfinished business to carry over. We have no new business tonight. Comments from Board members?
I have none.
I have none either. So at this time, I'll ask for motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
I second. The meeting is adjourned at 6:02 PM. As soon as we reset, we will begin the Board of Public Works and Safety. Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the second of three meetings tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beech Grove. And at this time, we will convene our Board of Public Works and Safety meeting for Monday, July the 1st, 2019. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my far right.
Dave Harrison.
Dan McMillan, Clerk Treasor.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Thank you, Board. We have been presented a printed copy of the minutes of the previous meeting dated Monday, June the 17th, 2019. The floor is open for any questions, comments, or corrections.
I have none.
I have none either. So at this time, I'll ask for motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll make said motion.
I second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. This evening, Board, we have 28 pages of corporate claims in the amount of $1,405,596.43. Floor is open for any questions or comments.
I have none.
No questions or comments. I'll ask for motion to approve the corporate claims dated July 1st, 2019, in the amount
I'll make that motion.
I second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. We have no unfinished business to carry over from the previous meeting. Under new business, we have a couple items. The first item, Board, was a block party for Detroit Street. He sent me another email asking to withdraw this. So they're not going to have this block party, so we can disregard this first order of business. The second order of business is insurance for city drones. So I don't know if... Chief, you want to talk about it? Rob, you want to talk about it? Talk about the purpose of the drones and what you would like to do.
The purpose of the drones will be a public safety issue for police and fire. It'll help us to investigate criminal activity and if the fire needs it for fire investigations. And it will be used specifically for that. And the insurance is needed just in case something happens with a drone, like anything else that the city operates. It's a city... We have two city-owned drones that the police department bought through our CIF fund. So that's the reason for the insurance.
Troy, you want to... Are you one of the operators, Troy?
Yeah, there's two remote pilots, me and Cory.
So what would be some of the examples you would use this for?
Some of the examples that the drones would be used for, since they do have a thermal, would be as if the suspect would be fleeing from police. They hide down in a wooded area or something. They can call us out with the drone. We'll be able to put it in the air, be able to search for them. Same thing as if a Silver Alert would go out in cold weather, somebody's lost, be able to put that up in the air, use the thermal camera to actually spot them and find them. On the fire scenes, if it's a large enough fire scene, we'll be able to put it up and actually see an aerial view. A lot of times, and actually finding out today, helicopter use is actually going by the wayside. So drone use is actually what's coming into play. Marion County IMPD has one drone operator. Wayne Township is now down to just three. With Beech Grove coming onboard, you've got two that have their R-107 licenses now, which is Cory and myself. That's the ones that we were aware of today. There was others from Johnson County, Hamilton County, that were there, but I don't know the size of their squads.
Chief, I know... I don't... I support this, but this wasn't budgeted, so we would have to come up with a way to fund it out of the budget.
Yeah, you're right. It wasn't a budgeted item.
No. I don't think it was put on our policy. I can call Kevin Hill and find out.
This is a new policy that Kevin found for us.
Right. No, I'm not questioning that. I'm answering Dennis' question about we have not paid for this. So it's something we would have to pay for.
Right. It's... It had to be approved first before...
Right.
Yeah. One of the things that I noticed when we had the storm a couple weeks ago, every news media had that. And I could see where that could help us.
Yeah, it has the capability, like Troy said, of taking photos and capturing them. And that can be kept for, I think it's a thumb drive or some kind of mechanism.
And that's... And the top off, and what Chief Schwartz talked about, finding out today, there is another avenue we can go to secure the footage and whatnot. And it would be secured and kept and definitely we would have access to. But that's something we're going to have to explore for next year or in the future. But going back to like you had talked about with seeing the tornado, that would have been something we've been able to put up that drone and actually see the debris field and see exactly what path it took, how big, how wide, and actually get a better idea from an aerial view instead of just ground view.
Dave, your thoughts from an insurance perspective?
I just was... I've never seen a drone insurance before. I was just... Is... Are these two makes and models, two different ones then?
They're two different drones.
The Matrix and the whatever it is.
One's a large one, one's a small. One's made for daylight use. The other one with the thermal imaging and cameras can be used at night.
And all the other stuff on page two is just parts that go with them then?
Yes. The drone actually came with insurance. We bought it for the drone itself. Liability insurance.
What would go wrong with this that we would have liability as a city? Do you know that?
Something mechanical. It'd fall out of the sky.
And hit somebody.
Right.
Have you ever seen the farmer's commercials with the Professor Burke?
Where it hits the windshield.
Yeah, it did. Those actually happen. They ask us to send them any weird thing that... And I've got a couple, but I couldn't send them because they're a little bit on the bad side. But that being said, that actually happened. And they're strange, but yeah. But those were not operated by police departments either. They were some idiot, so. Strike that, please. I'm just saying. But yeah, anything can happen to them, that's for sure.
When would you start using these? So I mean, the most we would have would be like a half year. I'm assuming that total quote is for a year.
I think it's for a full year.
It's for a full year, so it'd be half that.
Well, I think I'll...
Or less than half that.
I was thinking he quoted for a whole year. Kevin, we'd have to call him and find out.
Okay.
But we'd like to be able to fly it July 3rd.
Oh, okay.
Not until you approve the insurance could we... Or are we going to try to fly it July 3rd?
It's got an annual premium on here, so that would definitely be for a year.
Right. So my guess is it'd be half that anyway, so that makes it a little bit easier to try to find the money for it for the remainder of the year.
Okay. Dave, any other thoughts?
No, sir.
Motion to approve.
I'll make said motion.
I second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. Stay up here, Chief. Last order of business is master vendor's license application.
Is that for the...
Yeah.
I found nothing wrong with the three people that were on the application, and I would approve it.
So your recommendation is to approve?
Yes.
All right. Dave, any thoughts or questions on this?
No. Didn't we do this last year for these?
This is a different person.
Oh.
And Kevin O'Meara, I think that's his first name. But anyway, he's already came in and reapplied for 2019, so this is completely new. Is this a standby location, or is it... Can he go anywhere in Beech Grove, or...
Any... They can go anywhere.
Okay. All right.
Yeah. All right. Motion to approve the master vendor license application for M&amp;M Food Service.
I'll make said motion.
I second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. Thanks, Chief. And that concludes new business. Comments from Board members?
If I could talk for about seven more minutes. You wouldn't beat my record. I have none.
All right. Nor do I. Motion to adjourn.
I'll make said motion.
I second. The meeting is adjourned at 6:13 PM. Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the third and final meeting tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beech Grove. And at this time, we will convene our Common Council meeting for Monday, July the 1st, 2019. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my left.
Buddy Temple, Councilman-at-Large.
Jim Brooks, Councilman-at-Large.
Dave Harrison, Councilman, District 5.
Dan McMillan, Clerk Treasor.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Vito Mascari, Council, District 2.
Elizabeth Lamping, Council, District 1.
Chris Duffer, District 3.
Kevin Day, District 4.
Thank you, Council. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Before we get started with special presentations, I wanted to invite my friend Steve Carter to come up. And I'm not sure where he's at. Steve used to be the Attorney General for the State of Indiana. Now he works for Senator Braun. He's a frequent guest in my office and with the Central Indiana Conference of Elected Officials. So it's always good to see him. And Steve, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. I will be brief. Three things Senator Braun wanted me to share with you. Number one, thank you, council members and members of our Beech Grove City Government here, all those who work to provide service to the city. The Senator worked on his local school board for 11 years prior to becoming a U.S. Senator. Doesn't have a lot of experience in politics, but he knows local government, knows how important that is, and appreciates your service. Second, he wanted to make sure that you know that I am available should you have issues that you believe the Senate Office should be aware of. I'm a little hesitant to say I'm from the federal government and I'm here to help you. Yeah, I thought it'd get a few laughs. But no, seriously, if there are issues that our office might be helpful with, we want to know about that. I'm his Central Indiana Director and Senior Advisor. So while he's in Washington, much of the time, I can communicate with him. So issues the mayor or council members have, they're important. Please let us know. Finally, probably the most important thing of the evening is to extend congratulations on behalf of U.S. Senator Mike Braun to the Wiley family.
Mayor?
We're glad to see you. And I also want to recognize, I'm appreciative that the city has seen fit to continue Warner's in public service with your counsel, Craig Wiley. Craig and I worked together with the City of Indianapolis several years ago in the legal department there. So thank you very much for your service. I think this is a recognition, not just of his service, but also that of our public safety officials. So I think this is a nice opportunity for the Senator to extend that thanks to the council for doing this. Thank you.
Thank you.
If Representatives of the Greenscape Commission could come forward for a proclamation. I wanted to read this into the record to celebrate Arbor Day. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than 1 million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of topsoil, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Therefore, I urge all individuals, businesses, and groups to join our Greenscape Commission and our Parks Department to promote the environment programs such as Going Green in the Grove. Now therefore, I, Dennis B. Buckley, do hereby proclaim the first day of July 2019 as the celebration of Arbor Day in the City of Beech Grove, Indiana, and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to promote our trees, woodlands, parks. And in witness whereof, I have unto set my hand as cause to be affixed the seal of the City of Beech Grove, Indiana, on this first day of July 2019.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Well, on behalf of the Greenscape Commission, we want to thank the mayor for doing this proclamation, having it every year. It's a requirement to be a tree city, and Beech Grove has been a tree city for over 10 years now. So we want to continue that tradition. And we encourage everybody to plant trees and care for the trees in your yard. Thanks.
Sister, my button bush is beautiful now. The button bush finally has all those little whatever.
They do. This is the time and the season. That's right. We gave away many seedlings, and one was a button bush at the Going Green for the Grove event. So we'll... Sure, we'll be doing that again in April. So come get free seedlings. Thanks, Liz.
Thanks, ma'am.
I want to call up our summer intern, Dolan Monroe, to advise the council on a food drive directive that we're doing for July. Dolan?
Thank you, Mayor. This food drive will start throughout the month of July, so it starts today. And the focus of the food drive is to raise canned foods for people that were affected by the tornado. There were 26, I think, displaced families from that, so we're trying to help them. And also restock the food pantry at the community center. This will be for only non-perishable foods. There will be no cash accepted for this project. You can drop off any of the food donations at the drop-off locations, which will be located at Hornet Park Community Center, Elton Geschweiler Senior Center, Beech Grove City Hall, and at the checkout line at Walmart as well. The project's sponsored by City of Beech Grove, Beech Grove City Schools, Grand Prix of Beech Grove, Speedway Indoor Karting, Whiteland Raceway, and Walmart. This project will be a great way for us to help these families and the community more broadly by raising these cans and helping both at the community center and these people affected by the tornado. Thank you.
In your packet, you should have the printed copy of the minutes of the previous meeting dated June 3rd, 2019. Floor is open for any questions, comments, or corrections. If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Thank you. Counselor, public comments?
Yes, one person, Mr. Granoble.
I'm Dave Granoble. I live at 115 South 12th Avenue in Beech Grove, Indiana. And I'm going to steal somebody's thunder just a little bit. I think it's a wonderful, wonderful thing what's going to happen here this evening for Mayor Wiley. You know, we're in times where we seem to have a lot of dissension and animosity, and if you're not of the same opinion, we don't seem to like one another. Well, there was a time where Mayor Wiley and I were on opposite sides of things. And I'm glad to say that in the last several years, we've become very good friends. And I look forward to running into him at Kroger on Saturdays usually. So, you know, I can say the same thing for myself and Frank Mascari. We were at odds at one time. Frank and I have been known to share donuts and coffee in the morning. So we don't have to have all this dissension just because we don't agree with things. But the point I wanted to make to you all tonight is you guys have some huge decisions to make coming up. And the one thing that I want to point out to you is no matter what you've heard in the last six months, no matter what you hear this evening, as far as the sewer sale goes, or the bids, or the appraisals, if you will, you still don't know what you're going to do with the $1.5 million. That's huge. And considering the clerk, the mayor, maybe some of the council members and the department heads will be starting to do their budgets in the next seven to 10 days, knowing whether or not you're going to have that $1.5 million is going to make a huge difference in 2020. You also still have the fight on your hands on the landfill, which nobody's talking about because for the last six months, we've been talking about the sewer. So in closing, I want to remind everybody that on more than one occasion, Todd Bertrand has told us, we the people own the sewers. You are the managing company. The mayor might be the CEO, but we are the owners. And I would ask any one of you, I don't care what party you're affiliated with, to make a motion to put this on the ballot so that the owners, we the people, get an opportunity to vote on whether to proceed or not. You guys are spending an awful lot of money, and to this point, you still don't have all the answers. Good evening. Have a nice evening and good luck.
Thank you, David.
We'll move to committee reports.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So today, we had three on the docket. We had two automatic renewals with no violations. That is Elmorel Mexican Restaurant LLC, and they're located at 2519 Albany Street. Then we had Payless Liquors Incorporated on Albany Avenue as well. And the last one that we had was a renewal violation, which is Nidalee. So it was a tough decision to make today. We had one motion to deny the one-year renewal, and then that was turned down. And then we automatically did a... We made a motion to do a one-year renewal based on the facts that he knows he has... There's four violations total and that the next round that his license will be terminated. So just because there... We have to uphold the integrity of our liquor permits and the guidelines and making sure our businesses are managing their businesses properly with the liquor permits and everything. So any questions? Comments, concerns?
I've got one.
Yes, sir.
Who was the no vote on it?
No vote?
Yeah.
Me.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I did no vote for the denial.
Renewal.
No, I did... I second the motion to do a one-year renewal, but nobody motion... Seconded the motion to deny it. So we overturned that and did a one-year renewal.
Thank you.
So just... And based on the facts that they know that this is their trial period and the last opportunity. So hopefully, that'll be overturned and... Or that there won't be any more violations moving forward, and we can go from there, have a clean slate. Any more questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ashley.
The Greenscape Commission did not meet in June due to the tornado. Compliance, you should have a compliance report. Public safety, you should have their report in your packet as well. The last one, Dan, financial?
Okay. Good evening, councilors. We paid the following bond payments for June. The 2,004 SRF loan in the amount of $68,089.52. The 2015 A revenue bond, $33,876.90, previously known as the 2,005 revenue bond. On the docket tonight, we paid for a new trash truck in the amount of $203,410. That got paid from the utility fund, sewer fund. No bonds or loans were used for this. Stormwater fund balance, $307,095.88. Spring property tax monies came in on Friday. I have included the Form 22s for you to view. The 2018 audit charge for the State of Indiana was $8,129. The audit only took a little over a month instead of the three months they estimated, so the cost was about half, as well as because I had been given an estimated cost of approximately $15,000. As I said last month, the general fund would flip from a negative balance into a positive balance after tax money, and that has happened. Keep in mind, we got to keep all our tax money as we no longer have a tax anticipation warrant. This is our third year in a row without a tax anticipation warrant. Congratulations to former Mayor Wiley. The naming of the police station after him is very much deserved. Thanks to the website volunteers who continue to keep it updated at no cost to the taxpayers. Financial reports, debt service, bank balances, and more can be found on the city website at www.beechgrove.com. The bank balances for the two accounts we use the most, the corporate account had $4,841,899.5. The utilities had $1,005,556.63. As always, if you have any question, my door is always open. Thank you. Respectfully submitted, Dan McMillan, Clerk Treasor, City of Beech Grove.
Any questions for the clerk? If not, we'll move into unfinished business, and I'll ask Tim Schowalter to come up and give you an update on the video taping. Tim?
Good evening. I just wanted to give you an update on what we've been doing with the television and the broadcasting. I've invested some money that the city has graciously given into a couple of devices that will allow us to livestream these program, these meetings over the internet. I'm, I have been running tests for the last couple of days, and then tonight, we're, I'm running a test too, to, to stream. I'm hoping to go live during the August meeting, and we're looking at either doing a YouTube stream that would be linked to the Beech Grove website, that they could go there. And I'd have to get with Dan and kind of figure out how we're going to embed that. Or we may do something through the Parks Department Facebook page that we could do. I did livestream a meeting last week. It went pretty well, unfortunately. I did the landscape, and it showed up as vertical, so you had to kind of turn your head to watch it. But other than that, it was, I would call it a small success. So that's where we're at. I've had the company that has contracted with Beech Grove to run a network cable up into the control room over here, and I've had the microphones all checked and tweaked so we'll have good sound. So that's where we're at right now. Any questions?
It doesn't appear that your microphone's working tonight.
This one here?
Yeah. Has that been?
Hello, hello? Can you, anybody hear me? I guess it's working back there.
Okay, must be directed, or directed out that way.
Yeah. I think that the speakers are back in the audience area because we would get feedback.
You guys can hear him pretty good? Okay, thanks.
Okay.
I just want to say, good job, Tim.
Well, thanks.
You know, a while back, we were involved with live feed, and some things happened, whatever.
Yeah.
You know, it is 2019.
Yeah, I started doing this in 1984, right out of college, and, you know, we had the opportunity and the availability of, of going on Comcast Live, I think it was Channel 29. And, you know, with all the digitization, high definition, and I don't know, for some reason, it, we're, we're, it, there's a lot of problems of getting that back. I've, I have been trying to work with Comcast to see if we can do something, but it's been an uphill battle, unfortunately. But I'll still plow ahead with that, too.
Well, good job.
Okay. Thank you.
Next up is a update from Todd Bertrand. Todd?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, councilors. Since our last session, I've sent you an email with two documents attached containing the engineering approach to appraisal. Council Lamping has those as people's exhibit A. I'm kidding. She has those printed off. Appreciate that. Trying to be funny, and it failed. The average of the appraisal values is $11.6 million. So having that in consideration and conversation with the mayor, it seems fit that it would be good to have presentations made before you by the three interested parties, individual presentations to engage the council at a level that is probably important to do at this point in time as a step of your due diligence and analysis. And I'll work with the mayor in setting that appointment with the interested parties to stand before you as individual companies and make a pitch to you as to why they believe they could be a strong partner here in the City of Beech Grove. And I think that is, shows a bit of conservatism. I know there's a lot of attention by your community, as rightfully so there should be. So we had a good town hall meeting a week ago, this past Thursday. It was great dialogue. It gave me an opportunity to stand before many of your constituents and just have conversation. And with that, I'll yield to your questions related to the appraisal, and I'll answer them the best I can because it's not my work product. As you can see, it's that of the Walden Group and Cleveland Engineering. So with that, I'll yield.
I have, quickly, now, I had the impression, I was kind of hoping to see some bid proposals already. Are they complete when you were talking?
So they're contingent on, on those documents there.
Okay.
So the, the bidders, now that we've gotten these in hand, and I've, I've transferred them to you, have corporate committees, they review once they see the appraisals. They all, I've made contact with them as recently as today, and even over the weekend, if they are interested in coming in before, standing before you making those presentations, and they all still remain interested.
Okay. And then you think those presentations will be, will they have back-to-back-to-back presentations, one meeting, or will they be allowed to come in individually?
I would, I would encourage you to have those in succession so everything's fresh in your minds. You can ask questions. Granted, they're not going to present in front of each other to give away their competitive edge, but in succession at a, at a single evening.
Okay.
I've got a question, Todd. Is all three of these for the purchase, or is any of these lease options?
These are just for purchase. No management agreement.
Okay. And second question is, for some reason, I'm not getting copied on any of this information that's coming in.
I can provide it.
I get the rest of the council's emails, but for some reason, them have not come in.
Okay, I've, I've sent them to council. I've, I've not included you, but that's just, I was engaging with them, so I can send those to you. I have hard copies as well for the record.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? All right. Thank you all. Thank you.
That concludes unfinished business. We'll move to new business. First item on new business is Resolution Number 7, 2019, renaming the police station. At this time, I'll defer to the council president, Bud Templen, for direction. Buddy?
Thank you, Mayor. Momentarily, Dan's going to read in to the record Resolution Number 7, which will be naming the current police station after Mr. Wiley. That also has in it that any new facility built would also carry that name over to the new building, hopefully down the road that that will happen. I wanted to, I'm going to probably make some mistakes here, but a couple people, I wanted to start out with some former police chiefs. Our current chief, of course, Mark Schwartz, he's here. I see Past Chief Rich Whitmer in the back, who served not too long ago, and he's present for this, this ceremony. I guess that'd be the right word. And I'm going to say, I seen Jack, since he come up here, Jack Brown, a former supervisor with the police department for many years, who's retired. And I also see Shirley Chalice out here. It's very important because one chief that can't be here, that was a chief that I got to work with, and one of the most fairest, honest chiefs, I mean, I can just pass that along. I wish he could have been here today as well, but, and that's Dan Chalice. The council up here, and when I get done jabbering, if anyone has anything they'd like to say before Dan reads the resolution, I, I wanted to real quickly make this comment that Warner Wiley started out in the old police department, which would have been right here in this city hall. And as the city began to get bigger and more needs, of course, it was probably not the largest or safest or, in all in all, the best place to be. And he was instrumental in going to Mayor Elton Geshweiler and saying, "Hey, I would like for you to look at a, a new police station for growth in our city." And maybe he'll have a chance to at least tell that story, if he will. So I won't mess it up because, believe it or not, Mayor, I wasn't there. But it's a great story because it talks about with, in this town, we had a fire station just built, and you have city hall. And, you know, we're not like a lot of communities where their next police building's probably planned, or fire station around the corner with who-knows-marble and probably fountains out front. We are pretty frugal with what we do in this city. But when it's time, when you need things, you need them. And that police department, which Mayor Wiley was instrumental in getting done, especially the drawings and so forth, I believe, free, just things like that that occurred. And briefly, it'll say everything in the resolution, but not only a city councilman and a, and, and mayor of this community, he served as police chief, and correct me if I'm wrong here, but one of the first graduates from the Beech Grove Police Department, from the FBI National Academy. Is that, and we've had a few since then, but Mayor Wiley was the first. Does anybody have anything they want to add today?
I just want to add to you, I, I appreciate that you're showing appreciation for Mayor Wiley, and, and that you made, made noted how important it is to get things done. And I just wanted to recognize the police, the current police station without air conditioning since the tornado came through, and they finally got air conditioning back today. So our police officers have been doing without air conditioning in their, in that building since the tornado a couple weeks ago. So, and I appreciate you bringing that to the, to the forefront, that it's time to do something good. We need to, we recognize the need, and we should do it. We should move forward and make changes.
Anybody else have anything they'd like to say? They certainly can talk even after, Dan. Dan, would you mind reading the resolution?
That'd be fine. Resolution Number 7, 2019, provides for the naming of the existing and future Beech Grove Police Departments as the J. Warner Wiley Beech Grove Police Station. Whereas, I, J. Warner Wiley was born in Beech Grove, Indiana, on June 17, 1937, and is a lifetime citizen of the city. Whereas, Chief Wiley is a 1955 graduate of Beech Grove High School and has two degrees from the University of Indianapolis in Criminal Justice. Whereas, Chief Wiley is a member of the Beech Grove High School Hall of Fame. Whereas, Chief Wiley is a graduate of the FBI National Academy, known as the West Point of law enforcement, and became the city's first graduate from the academy. Whereas, in 1985, Chief Wiley served as the president of the FBI National Academy. Whereas, Chief Wiley is also a graduate of the Southern Police Institute at the University of Louisville, Kentucky. Whereas, Chief Wiley served the citizens of Beech Grove for 47 years as police officer, park board president, city council member, board of public works and safety manager, chief of police, and mayor. Whereas, Chief Wiley joined the police department on September 15, 1957, and retired as chief of police on April 15, 1979. Whereas, Chief Wiley oversaw the construction of a new police facility, which opened to law enforcement and the public in September 1974, and worked to achieve national accreditation for the department. Whereas, Chief Wiley was elected to the FBI National Academy Executive Board, which currently represents over 35,000 law enforcement personnel worldwide since its conception in 1935 by J. Edgar Hoover. Whereas, Chief Wiley, as president of the FBI National Academy Executive Board, coordinated with 16 European countries to establish the European chapter. In October 1984, Mayor Wiley flew to Munster, Germany, to sign the charter officially creating the European chapter. For his work, he received a friendship cup from the King of Norway. Whereas, Chief Wiley received 25 awards, honors, and recognitions, including Indiana's highest award, the Sagamore de Wallbeche, from Governor Frank O'Bannon. He also received the FBI National Academy's highest award for his dedicated service and commitment to law enforcement from the National Academy's president and executive board. Whereas, Chief Wiley was selected to the American Legion's National Police Hall of Fame in 1974, and in 1976 was listed in the first edition of Community Leaders and Noteworthy Americans. Whereas, Chief Wiley was awarded lifetime membership in the FBI National Academy and the International Association of Chiefs of Police. Whereas, Chief Wiley has met and conversed with four U.S. presidents, Gerald Ford, Jimmy Carter, Bill Clinton, and Barack Obama. And whereas, Chief Wiley continues to be active in his community by aiding Mayor Buckley in building a much-needed new police facility soon. Now, therefore, I, Dennis B. Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beech Grove, hereby affix my signature and the seal of the City of Beech Grove, Indiana, this first day of July 2019.
Thank you, Dan. Questions or comments from council members?
I got a comment. So I, I spoke to my dad a couple years ago and asked him, I said, "Do you have any regrets? Do you wish you had done something different?" And he said, "Well," he said, "maybe." He said, "May I have gone to the army and became a general?" And I can assure you, when we were kids, when we got in trouble, we thought we were in the military. I don't know if the attorney general's still here tonight, but Mayor Goldsmith, when he introduced my dad, he used to call him his favorite mayor, not his favorite Democratic mayor. And he always had a real good friendship with Mayor Goldsmith. As I looked throughout the audience, we see long, long-life friends, former department heads, family members. And for everybody to be here tonight for my dad, on behalf of the Wiley family, we're really touched, and it goes to, as a testament to his character and the type of man that he is.
I'd like to say, Mr. Wiley, I've been on the council seven and a half years, and I can assure you, this sets a record for whereses. The only one they don't have on here was that you were part of a state, wasn't it Beech Grove 1955 football team that won the state? Or, or went undefeated?
19...
54?
54, yeah. Undefeated team.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council members? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve Resolution Number 7, 2019.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Please register your vote. Congratulations.
Yeah. You gonna say something, Dan?
I'm gonna tell the story.
Mayor, would you want to say anything now, or would you like to speak now?
Yeah.
Okay. It's okay with this, Mayor, I'm sure.
Maybe I'll shut up and sit down. Pardon me while I do some groundwork here. Can I turn this around a little bit?
Sure. Here, let me do it.
Okay. Buddy, you want to give him a minute? This is a little late. Um... First of all, for the people in the first couple of rows, I'd be, be forewarned that I've taken a medication. It makes my mouth very dry, so I got a lodger's in to keep my mouth moist, so if it comes flying out, like, you don't know what it is, okay? I want to thank everybody that's come here this evening to witness, I guess, a little bit of history in the city of Beech Grove. And I want to especially thank Mayor Buckley, and all the members of the city council, Clerk Treasor, and all the local and state and foreign police officers that I've had the opportunity and pleasure of working with worldwide, actually, over my 47-year career. Hadn't been for them, I probably wouldn't be standing here tonight. I want to thank the, probably the most I want to thank is the people of Beech Grove, who have honored me by having, letting me serve them for those 47 years in the capacities that was just red a while ago, and I appreciate that very, very much. And I also want to, I think Buddy pointed out the police chiefs that are here tonight, but I'd just like to recognize all the police chiefs who have come along behind me and made the Beech Grove Police Department what it is today. That would be, I don't think, Mike Johnson, Mike Curran... That would be, I don't think, Mike Johnson, Mike Curran, Chris Malott, and a special recognition to our current police chief, Mark Schwartz, who, by the way, is going to retire at the end of this year after almost 40 years of law enforcement work here in the city of Beach Grove.
You want to try it again, maybe?
No, I don't want to try it again. So, I congratulate all of them. Well, he, yeah, Dan Chalice, unfortunately, Dan Chalice passed away a couple of years ago, but he's amply represented by his wife Shirley back there and his son, Robert. So, thank you for coming, I appreciate it very, very much. These officers that you see here tonight, and the ones that are out on the street tonight, have kept Beach Grove, over the years, a safe place to live and work. And this goes back to 1935, when Beach Grove became a fifth-class city, and appointed its first police chief, whose name was Charlie Lowell. And our police and fire department employees are among the best, trust me. They're a great asset to our city. So, the next time you see, and this includes the military too, by the way, next time you see a police officer, firefighter, or a person from the military walk up and shake their hands and tell them you appreciate what they do, they're not going to bite you or throw you in handcuffs, believe me. And also, I'd like to recognize, believe it or not, one of my classmates, I don't think there's any more, one, Thelma Hunter Harkness Thompson, Thelma stand up. We've been classmates and friends for 70-some years, and I appreciate, Thelma, you coming here tonight and participating in this. And last but not least, my family, my in-laws, that already have been introduced, love you all, and I thank you for standing by me all these years and putting up with me going out and playing policeman while my wife's home and raising poor kids and working a full-time job, so I thank you for all that. You know, I'm usually not lost for words, but I have to tell you, I'm, and I'm usually not nervous, but I have to tell you, I'm a little bit nervous tonight. I've spoke before to thousands of police officers around the world, and, you know, got along fine, but I'm a little nervous here tonight, so bear with me. And there's much more I'd like to thank people for too, but I'll save that for later. I want to tell you a couple of stories. Buddy asked me if I'd do that. It kind of sums up my career, and I could probably talk for the next two hours about the good times and the bad times that Dan and I went through, and all the police officers that I worked with down through the years, but I've limited it down to two, and I appreciate if you, let me tell you about them. If you don't like them, just raise your hand, I'll quit talking. You know, and I, growing up, I always wanted to be an FBI agent. And so, when I turned 21, I thought, you know, you can go in taverns, you can buy beer, and you can do all this stuff at age 21, so I should be able to be an FBI agent at 21. So, I called the FBI agent office here in Indianapolis and told them I'd like to become an FBI agent. And the guy said, "Well, that's fine." He said, "Let me get a little information." And I gave him my name and address, and I told him I was born 1937. He said, "Well, that makes you 21." He said, "Stop right there." Because you've got to be 25 to be an FBI agent, and I assume you don't have a college degree, which I didn't at the time. And so, he said, "Thanks for calling." He said, "I recommend between now, the time you're 21 and 25, that you go back to college and get your degree," which I did, I got two, as a matter of fact. "And when you turn 25, call me, and we'll see what we can do." Well, that seemed like a long time to wait to go change jobs, so, and he said, also told me to get a job in a medium to large, or small to medium police department, get a little experience. So, I did. I applied for Beach Grove, Indiana State Police, and IPD, and I was accepted to all three of them. But I guess fate came in and said, "Warner, you need to take the job in Beach Grove." Because after all, I was born here, lived here all my life, my family's lived here all their life, and I, that, I think that's the job I needed to do to work for the people of the city of Beach Grove. So, I forgot the FBI, went, got my job every day, and one day I walked into the office and the chief said, "I've got a letter up here for you." And I opened the letter up, and it was an invitation from Director of the FBI, J. Edgar Hoover, saying, "I'd like for you to come and be part of the 75th session of our FBI National Academy beginning in March." Well, I mean, I was elated. So, I rushed home and told Janet, and I said, "You know, I don't know whether I can do this or not." And she said, "What are you talking about?" I said, "Well, you know, we've got four kids, they're working a full-time job, and I'm going to be off playing policeman, and I don't..." She said, "Don't worry about that, I'll take care of things." So, away I went, and believe it or not, this is the truth, my roommate at the FBI Academy, his parents actually grew up in Beach Grove, but his name was Winston Churchill. And I'll never forget, the first weekend that we had to get our laundry cleaned, we watched, back then, you stayed at private homes or in apartments or hotels while you went to the academy. Right across the street was a Chinese rent, or Chinese laundry. So, we walked in and put our stuff down, and she got around to Winston, and she said, "Sir, what's your name?" And he said, "Winston Churchill." And she kind of looked at him, and she said, "Well, if that's a name you want to use, that's fine with me." So, anyway, that, I went to the academy, I graduated, probably one of the best experiences of my life, if not the best. And at age 28, I was the youngest, and I still think today I'm the youngest police officer in the world to go through the FBI National Academy. So, after graduation, I came back, I became active in the state FBI National Academy Associates. We meet quarterly, all over the country, actually. And I became president, and I went to the regional training facility in Oklahoma City in 1976. And I was fortunate enough to be elected to the executive board of the FBI National Academy, and I served on that board for 12 years. And the last year, I served as its national president. And in that capacity, I was honored to, and I'd been working with the people in the 16 European countries on establishing their own chapter of the FBI National Academy, so I knew most of them. Anyway, we went to Germany, and I signed a charter establishing the, establishing the European chapter of the FBI National Academy. And for that work, I was given a friendship cup from the King of Norway, which is pretty cool. So... So, that's, that's that story. The second story might be a little bit more interesting. In 1968, I'd been promoted through the ranks, and 1968, my good friend and mentor, Mayor Elton Geiswiler, appointed me chief of police. I was 30 years old, I think, probably the youngest police chief in the state. But anyway, I'd always, we were working out of this building downstairs in a room about, I don't know, about that big, maybe, and there was 20 of us working in that area, you don't remember that. And we were crawling all over each other. And so, I approached Elton, I told him, I said, "Elton, we need a new police station." And he never answered me. And I learned later, when he didn't answer you, the wheels were spinning, and he was thinking about something, you know, so I, let's let it go, I'd set the groundwork, so... A few months later, Dick Ferguson and I, Dick was the deputy chief, unfortunately, he died in the line of duty in 1972, I think it was. But anyway, every morning, we'd meet over across the street in Fred's Grill and have coffee and talk about what had gone on the day before. And this one day, I was sitting at my desk, and for some reason, I tore out two yellow pieces of paper and took them with me. I don't know why I did it, but I did, so I got over to the restaurant, and I said, "Dick," I said, "You know, I think it's time we, you know, start working on getting a new police station." He said, "Well, I agree, chief." I said, "Well, you take this yellow piece of paper, and I'll take this one, and just sketch out what you think would be an adequate police department for our city." So, we did. And when we put them together, they were almost identical. His ideas and my ideas were almost the same. So, I took that piece of paper over to Elton one day, and by the way, until I was in my 30s, I never called Elton Elton, I called him Mr. Geiswiler. That's how much respect I had for that man. But anyway, I walked into his office and laid those pieces of paper on his desk, and he said, "What's that?" And I said, "Well, it's Dick Ferguson, I sit down and sketch out what we'd like to see a new police station look like." And he picked it up and looked at it, and sort of decided, again, he didn't say anything, the wheels are spinning. So, I went back to my office, and a couple of months later, I went back over, and I never went in his office unless he invited me in. So, anyway, he said, "Morning, Warner, come on in." I said, "What can I do for you?" I said, "Oh, you remember I talked to you a couple of times about we need a new police station? That's what I'm here to talk to you about today." And he was sitting at his desk like this, looking down at his desk, he never looked up. He said, "We don't have the money." I thought, "Well, that's not going too good." So, so I left, went back over to my office, and I'm sitting there, I'm saying, "Hey, you know, I'm not going to let him get away that easy," you know, so I waited a couple of more months, and I went back over again, same thing, "Come on in, Warner." And I said, "You know, Elton, we've talked a couple or three times about a new police station." Still looking down at that, wherever he's looking at, and he said, "We don't have the money." So, by now, I'm getting a little bit, you know, upset, because I want to see things move and improve in the city. And I'm thinking to myself, "I'm not going to spend four, eight, 12, 16, 20 years, or whatever it is, of being police chief, and not have anything accomplished that's going to be beneficial to our police department, to the city of Beach Grove." So, I waited a while, went back over, and same thing, come on and sit down. I said, "Elton, I'm still here trying to get a police station built." And he said, "Warner," he said, "I know fully what you're talking about, I understand the need," he said, "but we don't have the money." So, I turned around, started to walk out of his office, and he said, "Warner, come here and sit down, I want to talk to you." I thought he was going to fire me, actually. And he said, "I'll make you a deal." He said, "I'll give you 90 days to go out in the public and get 1,000 people in Beach Grove to sign a petition, if that's necessary, to get a bond issued to build a new police station." And so, I walked out, I'm walking like this in the area, you know, just happy as a lar, went over, got on the phone, started calling some people around through the city, and put together a committee of about 10 or 15 people. And we went out through the city, and in 45 days, got 2,200 signatures. So, I took those back over in his office, laid them down on his desk, and he said, "What's that?" I said, "Well, Elton, you told me to get 1,000 signatures, there's 2,200 here." He said, "Are they verified?" And I said, "Yeah, they're verified." And for the first time, I saw a little smile on his face, you know. He said, "Tell you what, I'll do, I'll make you a deal, get the signatures and come back, and we'll go from there." But he said, "I want to know how much, basically, how much it's going to cost, how big it's going to be, blueprints, rendering, everything I need to know about the new police station." So, I did. Went over to my office and went through the phone book, looking under architects. I didn't know any, so I went down a list, and the closest one was a guy named Bob Hyman, who worked over in Palace Square. And I got on the phone, and I said, told him who I was and what I wanted to do, and he said, "Chief," he said, "you're asking me to do a job, and I'd be happy to do it, but it's going to cost some money." I said, "Bob, I don't have a penny. I can't pay you a cent." He said, "Well, that makes things a little, a little bit more difficult, because I do work for a living, you know." So, I thanked him and came home, and I was really just, you know, down, and so, a week or 10 days later, my phone rings, it's Bob Hyman. He said, "Chief," he said, "I know you're sincere, and I want to help you. I'd like to be involved in my community, and I want to help if I can." He said, "I'll do the job pro bono, which is free," you know. So, I thought, "That's, you can't do much better than that." So, I brought those back, I still got them at home, I got the original prints, I've got the original rendering, the whole wall of wax. We got the bond issued, passed, and it was estimated to cost between $250,000, I think, and $300,000. That same building today would probably cost you $10 million, at least. So, anyway, we broke ground in September, I think it was, of 1973, and moved into this state-of-the-art, beautiful police station that police chiefs and mayors from all around came in to see. A lot of them actually took our blueprints, went back to their communities and built a station that either exactly like ours or similar to the one we have here in Beach Grove. Well, since that time, and then we moved in in 1974, it was a beautiful building, room for everything, you could, you know, you could put anything in there. Well, that's all changed today, and I was out there about a year ago and took a tour of the facility, and it's 45 years old, and it looks every bit of 45 years old with all the traffic that comes through that building, and down the basement, where we used to have showers and lockers, and we still got firing ranges down there, but all kinds of things that was beneficial to the police. That's all taken up now with drugs, guns, and you name it. It's got the whole bottom part of our police station covered up. So, we need to change that. And while I'm here tonight, if somebody in the next few months or whatever years, I don't know, comes knocking on your door and asks you to sign a petition for a bond, and I don't know whether that's going to be how it gets billed or not, but if they do, please, sign the petition, and, or do whatever the mayor and the city council wants you to do to help get this done. It's really needed. It would be beneficial for recruitment, it would be beneficial for the mayor to recruit people with new businesses into the city of Beach Grove. And we would have space located throughout the building for narcotics and all the other stuff that the police run across every day. So, with that, I'm going to close up in here in a minute, but you might want to call the chief, and I'm not going to speak for the chief, but you might want to give him a call and say, "I'd like to come out and look at your building." And I'm sure that they'll make some kind of accommodations for you to go in and look at it, where it needs to be replaced. So, let me close again by thanking everybody that come here tonight. I'm overwhelmed, to be honest with you. Thank you very much. Thanks to the mayor and the council again for their help. And during my 47-year career, I don't, at age 82, I don't know what's in, you know, ahead of me, but whatever it is, better happen pretty quick. So, there's an old saying, and I may screw this up, it says, "Time goes fast, life is short, and there's no reruns." So, if you've got anything that you need to get done, you probably ought to get about doing it, because before you know it, you go from 40 to 82 before you know what's happened. So, again, I thank everybody from the bottom of my heart. Thank you.
We got, we got one more item. Where's the police chief? Mark, come on up. What, what we'd like to do now is present the chief with a picture of Warner when he retired. This is back in '79, so he can hang it up in the police station. So, chief, can you accept this on behalf of the Wiley family?
Oh, my God.
We are going to take a short five-minute recess, and then we'll, we'll come back to normal business. Thank you. Good evening. We're going to reconvene our meeting and go to the second order of new business. This is an item for the 2020 budget concerning Thompson Road sidewalks, and I'm going to invite our consulting engineers to come up and give us an update on the project and what it is, what's the cost for next year. So, come on up and...
I'll take Mike, but Mark, the two.
And council, you should have this in your packet.
Well, I didn't get a sneak peek at the agenda. I was really, I was sitting there hoping that I wasn't following Mayor Wiley, but here I am, so. I'm Brian Kragg with GAI Consultants. Mayor Buckley's asked us to come and give some updates on the projects that we're working on for you guys. So, the first one that Marc is holding up is Thompson Road Trail. This is a 10-foot multi, 10-foot wide multi-use trail that'll run along the north side of Thompson Avenue, or Thompson Road, rather, from 9th Avenue to Emerson Avenue. Thompson Avenue, or Thompson Road, rather, from 9th Avenue to Emerson Avenue. It's gonna be offset from the road by about 15 to 20 feet. And that one, we're about 45% through the design right now. So that one will also include new sidewalks along Yazoo Drive between Thompson Road and Woodmont Court, so a short stretch of sidewalk there. That one, I think one of the things the mayor wanted me to hit on is the 2020 budget. So we've kind of broken down the whole project development cost over the three or four years of expenditures that you'll incur. And so for 2020, we're projecting that a total of $141,487 will need to be spent on that project, and that's broken down into a little over $96,000 for engineering fees and $45,000 for land acquisition. So we got, I got three of them to present, so I guess I'll give you guys an opportunity to ask any questions before I move on to the next one. So if you guys have any questions on Thompson Road, I
Any question on the Thompson Road project?
There was a question about the land acquisition. There were some concerns about property along there, correct?
Yeah, there'll be, yeah, we're projecting to need acquisitions from about eight parcels. They're all on the east end of Thompson Road. And it's an issue of, there's good right-of-way, existing right-of-way that's documented through most of the project until you get to the east end. And after, as a part of our survey activities, our surveyors go and research the recordings of the existing right-of-way, and if they don't find properly documented, recorded right-of-way, then we have to show it as not having any right-of-way, and we have to reacquire that right-of-way. So that's the situation on most of those parcels on the east end. So I think I failed to mention, that one is, that one will be a bid opening of July 14th, 2021, so construction will start on that about August of 2021. If there's no other questions, I'll move on to the next intersection there. This one, we're just getting started on, so we got our contract signed last month. This one was awarded funding through the Indianapolis MPO. Yep. This is at the intersection of Churchman Avenue and Perkins Avenue and 25th Street. And this is what we're calling a peanut roundabout, for lack of a better technical term. It's also similar to a teardrop roundabout, if you've heard that term, but it's a unique geometric solution for this exact type of existing intersection where you've got severe skew at the intersections. And so this one is scoped mainly as a safety improvement. There's been, what do I have, 19 accidents with injuries at these intersections, these two existing intersections over a five-year span. So that's one of the factors that scored it very well with the MPO and the type of funding that we applied for. It was HSIP funding, which is totally safety-based funding. And so the MPO had high remarks for this one as far as the funding. They said it scored the highest in its category, so that hopefully demonstrates the MPO's commitment to the project. So the best way to explain it is to look at the geometrics. It definitely, you need a visual aid to explain it, but it's, you can see why it's termed a peanut. It's basically situated at the crux of the two, of the existing intersection, and the pinch point between the two teardrops is right at the intersection of Perkins and Churchman. So this one is scheduled to be let for construction in December of '13, so it'll likely start actual construction in the spring of, I'm sorry, that was 2023, so it'll start construction in the spring of 2024. As far as the 2020 projected budget, we're projecting that a total of $166,630 would be spent on this, and that is all engineering fees. And then next year, we would start land purchases.
When they have these projects and when you do like an accident research and it's more of a safety thing, do you have better funding with that? Do they give you better funding when there's, when it's a safety thing?
Well, yeah, the benefit of HSIP is that the MPO funds more of it. It's a 90-10 split, which means they'll fund 90% of the construction versus some of the other types of funding are usually 80, typically 80-20.
Because house scores and for the community for safety, okay.
Yeah.
Yes. If she were to carry that over there by you, could you show us how you envision traffic flowing through that? Because it's kind of unique.
It basically functions the same as one typical roundabout as far as the yielding activities that happen. So if you can isolate this, the basically two isolated roundabouts, on Churchman, you would come up and yield to any traffic that's already in the peanut. And so you would enter based on any cars coming around here or any cars entering from the leg of 25th. And so that's kind of a typical roundabout approach. Same thing here, you would yield to any traffic that's continuing around the peanut. This one is a little bit of a hybrid, and this has to be confirmed with traffic analysis upfront, but this one is an independent roundabout where it is one to not. So you can come down Churchman Avenue and go around this roundabout, come up Perkins or Southern without having to go around the entire geometry. Every other movement, if you wanted to go just continue on Churchman to 25th, then you would be forced to navigate through the metrics.
So somebody coming north on Churchman, as they approach that second roundabout, the more round one, they would yield to those already in that one too, huh?
Yes, and that's the main thing we need to verify to make sure that since this is a yield versus continuing through, that this doesn't back up past this point where this traffic has. So that has to be verified, but that right now, that's
And how do they verify that?
We'll run a simulation through our traffic analysis, and it'll tell us what the queue's gonna be here based on, we'll put in turning movements of how many total cars are approaching here, here, how many are making this movement, how many are continuing on. So it's based on source and destination of each of the approached volumes, and then the software will tell us how long that queue is gonna be.
Does bus line traffic come through there, the bus? The bus, does it come through there?
Yeah, and that was part of the reason for this, because I believe they make this movement currently where they come up Southern. So that would give them an opportunity to come that way.
Thank you.
Is there a representative, a representation of that peanut, someplace close around here, just out of curiosity?
You know, I'm not sure.
That's okay. Oh, really?
I mean, there's teardrop roundabouts.
But that, but that hybrid type, okay.
The one up there in Allisonville Road, where you have to go up, make a U-turn and come back to go west on 9th Street, is that the teardrop? They call it a Chicago roundabout.
How much of that is in Indianapolis? No, no, this is a new roundabout.
It's about a half-split.
So we would take half of the 10, and they would take half of the 10?
No, we would, that would be, the city of Beach Grove was awarded the funding.
Okay.
We would work with Indianapolis DPW, the city would fund that.
Okay.
Before he sits down, I wanted to go through the Arlington and Churchman bypass roundabout. I was just getting ready to start.
This one is going to, this one's already been advertised for letting, so this will have a bid opening next week on the 10th, I believe. Let me see here. Yes, the 10th. And we'll have a groundbreaking ceremony on August 13th for this one. So right now, what's going on out there, if you drive out there and you see any construction, there's utilities that are relocating right now. So that's a good thing to get those out of the way before the construction starts. That's not always the case, so that'll, that'll make construction a little smoother in this case, but that's what's going on right now. So the construction is set to begin no earlier than the day after Labor Day. It's supposed to begin the Tuesday after Labor Day, September 3rd. And it'll have a intermediate completion date of November 20th. So that's when it'll be open to traffic, November 20th of this year. Depending whether at that time of the year, that there may be, they may have to stripe that and get it through the winter without the surface layer of asphalt, the top layer of asphalt, and they'll come back and do that next year. Hopefully, they can get that all done this year, but there is a chance that they would come back next year and have just a little bit of construction in 2020. Any other questions on that one?
There won't be, that won't be a budget item for 2020. That, whatever money was budgeted for that will come out. Any questions for those projects?
Any chance on getting money from Indianapolis for those projects?
We can sit down and, we could certainly sit down and talk to them about it. All right, thank you.
Thank you. They already have this, right?
Yes. Also, for next year, I want to bring up our friends from Crossroad Engineers to talk about the Franciscan Trail and what's gonna happen in 2020. So I have the drawing here, and I'll defer to Trent.
Good evening, counsel.
Hi, Trent.
Trent Newport with Crossroad Engineers. As mayor said, he's got the drawing for this project. I would hope everybody's well aware of this one, that has maybe not as many questions. This has been in the works for many years. It was actually a Greenway by previous name, was funded, and then funds were given back to the MPO, and then it was re-awarded and now called the Franciscan Trail. So we're finally getting towards the end. It will go to letting next July, a year from now. And so what we're, we're about 75% on design right now and getting ready to start in permitting processes. We have nine parcels. It's a long project, as you guys are aware, starting at Sarah Bolton Park, going south and easterly, crossing 9th, and then ending up at Emerson Avenue. It's a very lengthy project, but a lot of it is on property you already own. So there's only nine parcels, and our status on those, four of those are already secured, all donated, and two other, three others are expected donations soon, and then that leaves two that we're still working through. One of those has changed owners very, very recently. And that, that level of, or that percentage of donated parcels is virtually unheard of in the work that we typically do. But that kind of tells you that people want this, number one, they're happy about the project coming, what it can connect and really bring to the community, but also I think it's attributed to the amount of public meetings that we've had on the project for a long time. And I would say we've probably nearing around 20 meetings now, either at council, RDC, Board of Works, separate public meetings, HOA meetings where we've gone and presented them to the school board and so on and so forth. So we're in good shape there. You have the document, I think that's most important to you tonight, that shows the 2020 budget for this project. There's $30,180 that will be remaining in 2020 in design fees. That's to get us to the finish line in the first quarter. And you'll see on your, on your document that that is split between the RDC and city. That's per agreement that has been in place for some time now to share those expenses 50-50. The construction is shown at 180. You'll notice down below that it says Franciscan Health contribution is $400,000. So the match for the city through this funding, which is 80-20, like normal, most of the funding through the MPO, is $580,000. The 400 of that is pledged by Franciscan Health, and so the remaining 180 is then split by the RDC and the city again, and that would be paid in, somewhere in that timeframe of July to August next year. And then $30,000 inspection. This project will start in July, but with the length of it, it's gonna go into the fall and then wrap into the following year in '21. So, and that inspection amount is actually, you're familiar with this from some of your past projects, you, you pay it all, but then you get reimbursed. So you have to front a little bit of the money in the beginning, but then NDOT is reimbursing you. So your total at the end of the day is gonna be $30,000, and again, split between RDC and city. Be happy to answer any questions. Yeah, so as I'd said, that 580 is a 20% match. So the funding from the MPO is 2.32 million towards the construction. And then towards the inspection total, they will fund approximately $320,000 out of the $400,000. So again, that'd be an 80-20 match. And again, those are funds that you, you pay on a monthly invoice, but then get reimbursed, typical to the construction phase of any project that gets funded through the MPO. So in total, with the 2.3 and 3.20,000, the total MPO funds are 2.64 million towards that project. So that plus the $400,000 coming from Franciscan is a huge windfall of somebody else paying for this great amenity that the city's gonna have, hopefully be completed by mid to late 2021. Any other questions?
Thanks, Trent.
Thank you.
Thanks, Trent. I wanted to run that by you as we start looking at budgets for 2020. And the last thing is the 2020 budget amount for the MPO Metropolitan Planning Organization Local Match, and Beach Grove's invoice for next year will be $7,141. And that's something that they invoice every year. I just want to make sure you're aware of that figure for budget purposes. We've paid it, I know the last seven years we've paid it, but for next year, it's $7,141 based on population and a couple other factors. So that will be an item as well. So that concludes new business. Counsel, comments, Buddy?
Thank you, mayor. I do want to thank the mayor and the city council, also Dan McMillan, for a lot of legwork as far as the naming of the police station for Mr. Wiley. Good group, good family that came out. I think the best thing to say is he's a wonderful person, has not only been a good servant for the city, and that's all I have.
I got, I feel privileged that I was able to be here when we did that for Warner Wiley. Warner, I've gone in for a long time. I was one of the ones that passed around a petition to get it signed. Because I, when the police department was down here, I was on the party department in the back part of the building. So we worked together. I was his janitor, I think. He's a great individual, and I do feel privileged to be here.
Thank everyone for coming and appreciate what Buddy and Dan did on this. I think it was a nice gesture. I don't think, I think it was very, very good thing we did. I appreciate it.
I think it was great to see Mr. Wiley out tonight. That was well-deserved. I moved across the street from Mr. Wiley when I was 12 years old. He's been like a part of my family, and their family's been, you know, I'm sure, part of their family for quite some time. Much deserved, and gratulations to them. Thanks for how he came out.
I'm gonna go a little different direction. I just wanted to respond to some blogs that have been made public recently, and I want to just read into the record something about the HEIL, H-E-I-L, about the HEIL garbage trucks, a proud history of innovation in the west, in the waste industry. For more than 100 years, HEIL has been in the forefront of excellence, innovation, and customer satisfaction in waste industry. In 1901, in a small rented building in Milwaukee, Wisconsin, Julius P. Heil started the Heil Rail Joint Welding Company, inspired by a new process called welding. Inspired by a new process called welding, Julius Heil began applying the technology to rail, to rail cars. Before long, he used the same process on tanks and truck bodies. As uses for electric welding grew, so did the Heil company. Heil's first garbage truck bodies were built in the city of Milwaukee in nineteen eight, in the early nineteen hundreds. By nineteen thirties, Heil garbage trucks were collecting solid waste in hundreds of American cities of all sizes. The rest, as they say, is history. Heil products are represented by a network of more than fifty knowledgeable dealers in the United States, Canada, and Mexico. Internationally, Heil's network reaches into a hundred and fifty different countries. Heil proudly manufactures a wide, a wide variety of garbage truck collection bodies, including for, front loaders, rear loaders, side loaders, multi-compartment vehicles, and roll-off hoists. All of our garbage, garbage truck bodies are made in the United States, and we are proud to call Fort Payne, Alabama, home. So, build, build it right, and then back it with integrity. More than any other principle of business, the commitment to do things right has made Heil the undisputed industry leader. About Heil, Heil is part of the Dover Corporation. Dover is a diversified, diversified global manufacturer with annual revenues of eight billion dollars. They deliver innovative equipment and components, specialty systems, and support services through, through four, for major operating segments. That includes energy, engineered systems, fluids, and refrigerator systems, and food and equipment. Dover combines global scale with operational agility to lead the markets we serve. Recognized for our entrepreneurial approach for sixty years, our team of over twenty-seven thousand employees takes an ownership mindset collaborating with customers to redefine what's possible. So, I just wanted to clarify the name Heil, and that is what a great job and American company they are, and I'm glad that we do business with them. And that's all.
I'd like to congratulate Mayor Wiley on the naming of the police chief, or the station, and I think that's well-deserved. I don't want us to ever forget the, the three officers that gave it all, though. I think it was Ferguson, Kleis, and Tony. Just wanted them to be mentioned here at this meeting tonight, that, that they gave it all. And at any moment, any one of these men could, men and women could, and I just want them to know that, that I'm aware of that, and I think all of us are. Congratulations to Mayor Wiley.
I just want to thank everyone for coming, and my congratulations to Mr. Wiley also.
A couple announcements before we adjourn. Obviously, July third is Wednesday, so the fireworks will be down in the park at dusk. Another free shredding event and free appliance drop-off scheduled for July thirteenth from nine to noon behind City Hall. The auction that was scheduled for July the twentieth has been postponed. Mike Heimel recommended that we hold off on it. So, he scheduled it for October the twenty-sixth at ten-thirty a.m. at DPW. So, there's no auction July the twentieth.
What, what are we auctioning, auctioning there?
Surplus equipment, and the reason why he didn't want to do it is we don't have very many vehicles to put in the auction, so he said it's not going to garner much attention. So, that's that. And then, finally, I want to make a, a public announcement, and it's, has been written by a, a new company for our city, and it says, "For immediate release, Real Estate Recovery Capital purchases one hundred and fifteen-acre site in Beach Grove, Indiana, Indianapolis, Indiana, June the seventeenth, two thousand nineteen. Working closely with the city of Beach Grove and CSX Transportation, Indianapolis-based Real Estate Recovery Capital, REC, has acquired a one hundred and fifteen-acre former brownfield site on Emerson Avenue in Beach Grove. The property is situated in an industrial, commercial area and has a rare combination of size, industrial zoning, and significant railroad access. The property has been vacant for decades and was most recently used as a railroad, railroad yard withholding sites for rail cars. Redevelopment of the site is currently in the planning stages." So, having said that, and it's immediate contact through Real Estate Recovery Capital. So, having said that, I will call a special council meeting, and it's a combination council meeting and RDC meeting for Monday, July the fifteenth, in these chambers at seven o'clock, so that we can go through the transition of the CSX property and talk about its future. So, it's July the fifteenth, seven p.m. in these chambers. It's a joint meeting between the Redevelopment Commission and the council. I don't know yet whether it will be open to the public or we will be working in executive session. That's yet to be determined by legal counsel. So, I just want to put that out and, and ask that you come to a special meeting on July fifteenth. So, yes?
Not in that, but I would like to congratulate the police department, the party department, and our DPW for the work they did after the tornado that was tireless. You guys worked your fannies off. You, Brad, you don't know how much we appreciate all you guys.
So, with that, I'll send an agenda out to you. The only item of business on that agenda will be the CSX property. So, having said that, I'll ask for motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Meeting is adjourned. I, Dan, I don't know what time it is.
Eight-thirty-four.
Eight-thirty-four.